All right, good evening, everyone. President Carver, Vice President Dr. Pack, members of the Governing Board, Superintendent Finch, Mrs. Taylor, district staff and special guests. Welcome to DVUSD's Awards and Recognition Ceremony for March 25th, 2025. Tonight, we celebrate the achievements of our winter sports athletes as well as some future business leaders. But first, I'd like to turn it over to members of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council for a brief presentation on their recent summit at Berry Goldwater High School. Please welcome Executive Council Members Preston Buell from Saunders Day O'Connor High School and Trinity DeCassola from Berry Goldwater High School.
Hello. All right, so this year, we had our Wellness Wonderland Summit. So we just want to introduce... Hold on, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. So what is SSAC? So it is a collection of two groups, which is our Superintendent Student Advisory Council and our Superintendent Student Executive Council. And we have a meeting every month in order to kind of plan and execute our summit. So the two levels of it is going to be our advisory, which is about 70, 80 members from 8th to 12th grade from these elementary schools and these high schools who come together to try and prep for this. And then we have our executive board, which is two members from each major high school. And they're going to meet with Ms. Bybee, who we kind of just planned with her to prep the advisory council what we're doing for that year.
This year, the summit was a massive success. We had so much fun hosting it at Berry Goldwater High School. I went the wrong way, sorry, guys. And we had six different groups. In our different groups, we sought to teach each school their individual, like, little mini lessons that they could bring back to their own schools. We had hygiene, physical health, relationship, mental health, tech management, and communication. For hygiene, they're a group... Their group created a game where they were able to have fruits and other things where they were able to show the germ spread, as well as with the goal of creating a healthier community for all to enjoy and thrive in. Physical health aims for the goal of improving mood and energy levels, helping everyone enjoy life more. Relationships aim to build strong friendships, require kindness, communication, and understanding from everyone involved. Mental health, which is my group, it was so much fun, aims to show that every choice you make shapes your future in unexpected ways. Tech management was focusing on comparing yourself to others, leading to feelings of inadequacy and self-doubt. And communication expressed a thorough message, ensuring that no critical details were missed or overlooked. So this is an example of our mental health group. We transported our kids that came into our group into a real-life Candy Land game, where each space dictated a different type of situation, where either something positive or negative happened. And based on how they rolled, they had a different result and outcome.
And then we also have our high school group. So this is going to gear more towards the high school kids. So we have more so mini lessons on everything. So for relationships, we had them answer questions and then repeat it back to their partners, showing how they were involved in learning with them. For physical health, it was wheelbarrow relay racing, because we had them switch at the end and it showed how difficult it was for people to kind of change their scenario so quickly. And then communication was rumor spreading and just how quickly that message can really just change. We had hygiene, which we had charades to fill a donateable bag. And then we had technology, which was people flipping through social profiles and judging whether they're safe or not, just kind of showing online how many unsafe accounts there are really out there. And then mental health, we had a Just Dance, because everybody really just improved from that dancing and it showed how much people... How much the music can really change their mood. And then these were just some photos. So this was our hygiene charade, so they would kind of act out what they were doing. And then we put it in their bag. And then this was the social profiles. And then this was the Just Dance.
At every summit, we also have the amazing opportunity and honor to host a guest speaker. This year, we hosted Ms. Katie McPherson. She touched on broad topics of mental health and how students always have resources to reach out and escape potentially dangerous situations that they may be in. She continued her conversation later on with the high school group that we just mentioned in order to touch more on adult depression and how detrimental it can be to young adults and how important our personal well-being truly is.
And then, of course, we have our amazing leaders. So we have Mrs. Bybee, who unfortunately is not joining us next year. And she's just the face of SSAC, always keeping us on track. And then we have Dr. Finch, who is our superintendent. He's always keeping the ideas and never really letting us get stuck on anything. And then that's it. Thank you, guys.
Do you have a video or something?
We did. Is it after?
On the next slide, see if it works.
I hope so.
Yes.
Click it again. There we go.
Sweet.
Good job. I just want to add to, Ms. Bybee did a nice job for us the last couple of years. And Ms. Taylor and Ms. Prince, obviously, they work in my office. They're also a critical part of making the machine go. They make sure we have the supplies and the kids are staying on track and contacting them, making sure they're doing their jobs and they do a nice job. Thanks again for giving your presentation. If you are interested in the audience or online to join the Superintendent Advisory Council, contact your principal.
Well, now take a few moments to recognize some of our student entrepreneurs who annually bring home plenty of hardware to DVUSD. The Mountain Ridge High School DECA chapter was recently honored as an Arizona Diamond Chapter, the highest level of recognition awarded by Arizona DECA. This distinction reflects the chapter's exceptional achievement in leadership, service, and program excellence. The Distributive Education Clubs of America, or DECA, prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. To earn Diamond status, students hosted a gold-certified, school-based enterprise, recruited judges for competition, participated in scholarship and leadership programs, and completed a series of chapter campaigns. This accomplishment was led by Chapter President Madri Doku and Vice President Lena Pelletiere with the support of the entire officer team. Their dedication represents the strength of our CTE programs and the commitment of our students to excellence beyond the classroom. We'll be honoring several of the chapter's members for their accomplishments at the state conference. But first, want to congratulate the entire chapter for its consistent performance as one of the top chapters in the state. Here tonight is Chapter President Madri Doku. And now, we'll recognize some Ridge students and teams for their accomplishments at the Arizona DECA State Conference. We asked each student to send us some thoughts on their experiences and we'll share the ones we received. Mountain Ridge DECA students won state championships in two categories. We'll start with prepared events. First up are Sanjita Kodakanda and Grishma Sabam, who won first place in Business Services Operations Research. Sanjita wrote that winning first place in our event was very unexpected, which only makes the award more special to receive. This is because before the competition, we had lost confidence and had to overcome nerves and uncertainties. However, I'm glad that all those days of putting in hard work for researching, preparation, and planning paid off and resulted in achieving such a great accomplishment. Grishma added that placing first in the prepared event was a fulfilling experience that highlighted all of the effort and dedication I put into my DECA journey. It taught me valuable skills in problem-solving, public speaking, and critical thinking that I'll carry with me moving forward. I want to thank Mr. Sam, Ms. Horton, and Mr. Ortiz for their dedication and time that they put in every year to give Mountain Ridge students such an incredible opportunity through DECA. Their support has made a lasting impact on my journey, and I am truly grateful. Congratulations to Sanjita and Grishma. Grishma could not be with us today, but we recognize her achievement. Our next state champs are Anan Prasad, Krish Vignesh, and Anish Padhyar for Community Giving Project. The team wrote that our achievement in the Community Giving Project was extremely valuable to us. This event gave us the opportunity to make an impact on the community as we held a basketball tournament fundraiser to support children with autism. With the help of many others, we were able to execute the event and contribute over $800 to the autism community. Once the event was over, we had to prepare for the DECA portion of our project. And with the assistance of our amazing advisors and supportive chapter, we were able to prepare a written report and detailed presentation for the state conference, leading to our success of becoming state champions. Finally, this achievement has also given us the opportunity to take our efforts to the next level, where we'll be presenting our project at the international conference with the goal of achieving first place. We are very grateful for our success and for our opportunities to compete internationally. Congratulations to Anan, Krish, and Anish. Next up are the pair of Divit Igor and Amit Taduri for Finance Operations Research. Amit wrote that Finance Operations Research is a prepared event where students are tasked to partner with a finance-oriented business. Each participant must conduct a research study about how the company can implement AI, elaborate upon it, share the findings, create a budget, and present all of it at the state conference. Winning this award was one of the best achievements in our lives. Leading up to the event, we spent a tremendous amount of time preparing and refining both our paper as well as our presentation. This year's DECA State Conference has truly been unforgettable. Congratulations to Divit and Amit. I don't believe either of you are here tonight, but congratulations to our next pair of state champions, Rithika Balaji and Sarah Adamsha for Hospitality and Tourism Operations Research. Next is a team of Mia Parent, Aditi Val, and Riti Chalankani for Startup Business Plan. The group wrote that over the course of a few months, we have all put our best efforts forward to achieve success. Through many different processes, we were able to bring the best version of our work, such as the feedback of our teachers, our parents, former DECA students, and the dedication each of us had. We applied our feedback and carefully revised our work to ensure we not only met the requirements, but brought something fresh and new with our concept. Having encouragement from one another during our presentations allowed us to present ourselves in a professional form. Doing these actions led us to finalize and end up on that award stage. When we were on that stage, waiting to hear the announcer reveal first place, a wave of happiness struck when we realized we had won. Winning felt like the best award, because it represented the hard work we did and helped each of us acknowledge that we were capable of greatness. Congratulations to Mia, Aditi, and Riti. She's not... couldn't be with us tonight, but Mountain Ridge DECA also has a state champion in the category of role-play events. Congratulations to Sophia Leiter, who plays first in Principles of Hospitality. And Mountain Ridge DECA also had several state champion runner-up finishers in the role-play event category. Neither of them are here tonight, but congratulations to Ananya Jalote and Arya Vijwais for Buying and Merchandising Operations Research. And next, congratulations to Rithika Balaji for Personal Finance Literacy. And also congratulations to Ayen Bakta for Restaurant and Food Service Management. And finally, we have Nandanya Warrior for Principles of Business Management. Nandanya wrote that this past year in DECA has been amazing and winning has been the cherry on top. Winning, to me, has meant achieving my goals through hard work and effort, while also celebrating the success and the people who helped me get there. To prepare for this competition, I studied for the test, attended competition preparation sessions, and utilized my peers. This experience has meant a lot to me, and I am excited to see what the future holds. Congratulations to Nandanya. All right, and now we move on to the basketball court, where two DVUSD boys teams are making a habit of long playoff runs. After winning the state 4A championship last year, the Deer Valley High School Boys Basketball Program, under Coach Jed Dunn, made it to their division's final four for the seventh time over the past eight seasons and to the state championship finals for the fifth time in the past eight years. This year's team kept that tradition alive by making it to the state championship game with a 25-5 record, but coming up just one defensive stop short in overtime against a super-talented and super-big St. Mary's team on March 6th. All of Coach Dunn's teams, over his 17 years at Deer Valley High School, are known for their toughness and grit on the court and for being respectful leaders off the court. This year's team had two all-conference first-team members, four first-team all-region players, three second-team all-region players, and three who received honorable mentions. They also had the 4A Region Player of the Year in Tyren Simpson, the Region Offensive Player of the Year in Sergio Gonzalez, Region Defensive Players of the Year in Micah Andrews and Elias Riley, and the Region and 4A State Coach of the Year in Jed Dunn. Congratulations to the Skyhawks for another great season. After reaching the 6A championship game last year, the O'Connor Boys Basketball Team had another amazing season, reaching the semifinals, becoming the first DVUSD basketball team to make it that far. The team finished 15-3 during regular season play, was able to play nationally-ranked teams during invitationals throughout the season. Eagles won three games during the open state championship playoffs, including an impressive road win versus Basha in the quarterfinals, before falling to eventual state champion Perry on March 5th. The Eagles placed one player on the all-conference first team, two on the all-region first team, one on the second team, and had one honorable mention. O'Conner's Michael Simko was also named the Region's Player of the Year. They were a close-knit group of players that had a great time playing together. You may also have seen the Eagles featured on multiple Phoenix television stations as they celebrated their biggest fan, Jackson Heilmann, after the special needs student drained a half-court shot during halftime of a game in February. Congratulations to Coach Josh Cole and the Saunders Day O'Connor Boys Basketball Team. All right, moving on to soccer. After posting a 10-2 regular season record, the Boulder Creek Girls Soccer Team earned the opportunity to compete in the first-ever girls soccer open-division state championship. The Jags won three games in the playoffs before falling to Xavier College Prep in the semifinals on February 22nd. Boulder Creek placed two players on the all-conference first team, three on the all-region first team, two on the second team, and had three honorable mentions. In addition, Sophie Williams was named the Region's Offensive Player of the Year. Coach Regina Cormier said playing in this game was a testament to the hard work, dedication, and perseverance that went into our special season. The game represented not only our team's achievement in previous games, but also the support and encouragement of the Anthem community. We prepared for the game by training for countless hours, watching film, and building each other up with team bonding events. Our team's family dynamic sets us apart and will help us to win future big competitions. Congratulations to Boulder Creek High School Girls Soccer. And finally, while we are proud of our student athletes for their accomplishments, we are also proud of the way they conduct themselves during competition. The AIA Sportsmanship Award recognizes teams who demonstrate respect and fair play. We honor two of our teams who received the award at our last meeting and are happy tonight to celebrate a third, Deer Valley High School Girls Soccer. Coach Gabrielle Buckley says it is a tremendous honor to be recognized by our officiating community to receive the 4A AIA Sportsmanship Award. This season, we focused on creating a strong championship culture that cultivates young women of good character, integrity, respect, grit, determination, relentlessness, resilience, and humility. The work of these young women has shown to be clear when people outside of the team can see the character within them. The Deer Valley Girls Soccer Team is eminently grateful for the opportunity to play and receive this admirable award. Congratulations to the Skyhawks. And that concludes tonight's Awards and Recognition Ceremony. The regularly scheduled board meeting will begin at approximately 7:00 PM. Thank you so much for coming.
Test.
Oh, there we go. All right, now we're on. All right, let me, let me start over. President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch, we do have one report to share with you this evening. I'm just going to preface tonight's meeting that you might be sick of me by, by the conclusion of this meeting. We have several things to share with you this evening. But starting with the Auditor General District Spending Report, formerly known as the Classroom Dollar Report. I was waiting for the presentation to get uploaded. This report is statutorily required and does include information about spending percentages, as well as a bunch of additional information that we'll just briefly cover tonight because the report recently has been issued, including some of the comparisons that we make to our peer and comparable districts, and I'll get into that throughout the presentation. As I mentioned, this was previously called the Classroom Dollar Report. So this was prefaced, this particular slide prefaced, the original intended purpose of the, of the report. It has evolved over time, but this does show what, the percentage of money that was actually spent within the various categories. And in direct instruction, you can see fifty-nine point five percent. But in classroom spending, you know, that would be directly impacting students, seventy-two point five percent of all the dollars we receive directly tied to students. And how does that, how do, how do we rank? Here is our peer group. Just one thing I want to comment about here is the Auditor General does this analysis, so this is not in any way modified. And they use what's called a peer group. The peer group changes based on the metric that they're looking at. You can see the list of, of instructional spending percentage peer group districts that are here. Later in the report, I'm going to give you comparable districts. Those are five districts that are more like Deer Valley, large K-12 districts here in the valley. We think it's a more representative comparison. But back to instructional spending based on the peer group. You can see Deer Valley spends the highest percentage on direct instruction from all of the, the other districts in the peer group. State average was fifty-two point six percent. We're at fifty-nine point five percent. The peer group at fifty-five point five percent. The report also looks at cost measures and comparisons under administration. You can see that area is identified as high. We, I'll cover that in a little more detail. This really has to do with the post-employee benefit that we offer that not every district that we're being compared to does have. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. Our plant operations are low. Our food service operation is comparable. With transportation, you can see there are likely some opportunities for, for improving within that operation. But I wanted to share with you what the peer group looks like that they're using. And again, the peer groups change. And this particular peer group includes elementary districts, very small districts. So they're using a mileage per rider as a metric for this peer group. I would argue that maybe that peer group isn't representative of what responsibilities our district has as a large high school district. Not only large in student size, but geographically, as well as, you know, including comprehensive high schools as well. And then being compared to an elementary school district, I think it's a little bit apples and oranges, in my opinion, I'll say. But nonetheless, there could be some opportunities within transportation. And we'll cover that when we look at the comparable districts, comparing ourselves to those. On student achievement, this is kudos to Dr. Galligan and her team, as well as all of our instructional leaders. You can see Deer Valley is at the top of this scale. This is kind of in reverse order. So there are only four districts that performed better than us when it came to student achievement. This is just that information kind of graphically showing that for math, forty-nine percent of our students were proficient, where our peer group was forty-six percent. The state was at thirty-two percent. Likewise, for English Language Arch, Deer Valley at fifty-six percent. The peer group's at fifty-three percent, the state at forty percent. And then finally, science at forty-nine percent, the peer group at, at thirty-eight percent, the state at twenty-eight percent. So in every category, we outperformed the peer group, as well as the, the state when it came to student achievement. This looks just at five-year trend. In every category, we have reduced in terms of the percentage of M and O. With the exception of student support and instructional support, those have gone up. Those are two categories that count in the classroom spending area. So not direct instruction, but direct services to, to students. So you can see the five-year trend of how that is happening for us. The next several slides will kind of switch from the Auditor General Report specifically for Deer Valley. And then we'll now be making comparable analysis of others, also District Spending Report. So again, the comparable districts would include Chandler, Gilbert, Paradise Valley, Peoria, and the Scottsdale School District. So they are on the far right, the average of those five. Deer Valley is on the left-hand columns, and then the state is in the middle. I'm showing you three years of data here to provide, you know, somewhat of a trend. I will tell you, just looking at this, looks relatively stable in terms of the percentage. You know, it might go up, you know, a couple tenths of a percent up or down between years. But this is just on the percentage basis. If you were to look at this on a dollar basis, I think it's a little bit more telling. And you, you will see that the Deer Valley School District receives, oh, it's, it's about six hundred and eighty dollars less than the state average per pupil. That may, may not sound like a lot, but if you multiply that times over thirty thousand kids, that's more than twenty million dollars difference annually that we receive less than the state average. Remember, the state average is what is reported in terms of nationally, how we rank as, as a state. So we don't now get the state average, and the state average is at or near the bottom in those comparisons. Likewise, we are also less than the comparable district average by just under a hundred dollars. So that would be in the neighborhood of a three million dollar difference annually that we receive. And just as a reminder, this includes the fully funded maintenance and operation override at the fifteen percent amount for next year. With the phase down of that due to it not being renewed by the voters, this difference will get, will get larger because we will be receiving less resources for next year. One of the things that a previous board looked at was our average teacher salary, and we made a concerted effort to try and get closer to, even though we do not receive the same dollar amount per student, try and get closer to the state average or comparable average. We've been able to make great strides in that. You can see our average teacher salary now at sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The state at sixty-five thousand one hundred and thirteen, the comparable districts at sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. So we have made some concerted efforts over multiple years to be able to increase the average teacher salary. Looking at those cost measures and comparing them again to the state, as well as those comparable districts. Again, these are again, more of a comparison of how we rank. And this is in a heat map, so the red area would indicate, as was noted on the Auditor General Report, that administrative costs are high here. Our plant operations are approaching more than the, certainly more than the comparable average, but not quite to the state average at seven dollars and seventy-two cents per square foot. The, and then I'll just point out the cost per mile is high. We fare a little bit better when you look at cost per rider, which, the two metrics that the, are included in the report. Regarding the administrative costs, the reason that it is much greater than other districts is we have what's called an other post-employee benefit, or referred to as OPEB liability. So this plan no longer is a benefit that we offer to employees and haven't since two thousand and nine. But previous to that, employees that qualify can receive a reimbursement for their health insurance costs if they, if they qualify based on the length of tenure of service in the district. That cost the district four point two million dollars last year in fiscal year twenty-four. We are on a pay-as-you-go basis with that. The, the amount is much greater than the other two districts that do have an OPEB liability, and the remaining districts that don't have a liability at all, an OPEB liability at all. So if we norm that, if you look, I should mention that the uniform system of financial records requires that the, this OPEB liability be charged to the general administration, even though the vast majority of people that qualified aren't within that category within the accounting code. But nonetheless, you can see we're at two percent for administrative costs. The comparable districts at one point three percent. I should also note, I've included DICE Art here because they have grown to be a much larger district. They are not included in the averages, but just so you can kind of get a sense of what that district is because they have gotten actually even larger than the Scottsdale School District currently. But if you norm that, you can see our administrative costs would be four tenths of a percent, where the comparable districts would be at one point one percent. So our administrative costs are relatively low when you norm the retiree benefit out of that. So the top section are the true costs that were reported. The bottom section are norming that, not just for Deer Valley, but for the other two districts, Paradise Valley and Peoria, that also have an OPEB liability of those comparable districts that we look at. So just in conclusion, we compare positively among our peer groups, even better when compared to the state. Again, there's the ninety-one dollars that we receive, fewer dollars than our comparable districts. If you look at the state average, it's six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Again, the administrative cost is, is a result of the retiree insurance benefit. I think it's worth noting that we have an actuarial look at the cost every other year. The latest report on this shows that the OPEB liability will be, you know, at least four million dollars through the year twenty forty. And then it falls off a very steep cliff, again, because we have not been providing this benefit for any new hires since two thousand and nine. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there appears to be maybe some opportunities to look at our transportation operation to try and find some efficiencies. We have been paying some premiums for things like contracted services to cover routes, things of that nature, that maybe there's a better way or a more cost-effective way to handle some of the transportation needs that we have in the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board for Mr. McGlurno?
I just want to apologize. I have, oh, sorry, I just want to apologize. I'm going to need to re-watch the presentation. I don't have any questions tonight because I can't hear anything, but I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simicak. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. McGlurno. We appreciate you. Next item on the agenda is item four A, approved contract language for certified administrative exempt and deputy superintendent, twenty-five, twenty-six. Ms. Moffett, I'm sorry, do I, we need a motion first.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, Ms. Moffett.
Okay. President Carver, governing board members, there are no changes to the explanation of why you're reviewing the contracts, but that you'll note if you do compare the ones that you received last time to this time. There were some edits, as recommended by board members, as well as some additional edits that our team discovered. I also want to disclose that after you do, or if you do approve this language this evening, they undergo another review prior to being published.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Any discussion from the board for Ms. Moffett? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Before we get to the next items of old business, I just want to preface for the community. Last meeting, we discussed some policies. And there's always a little bit of concern about how it is that we're managing policies at DVUSD. And our policy states that we'll bring policies up during a meeting to discuss, and that at least fourteen days will pass before we bring them back for a vote. At the last meeting, I believe we had five policies that we discussed. Two of them in principle were agreed upon before the meeting was over without a vote. So those were moved to the consent agenda. The three items that there seemed to be a need for future discussion on were brought back in, under old business so that the board could continue to deliberate and see if anything else needed to be done to adjust these policies. So I just wanted to preface these next three items with that statement. That being said, Dr. Pack, item four B?
I move that the governing board approve contract language for certified administrative exempt and deputy superintendent for the. I'm on B. Okay. Refresh. Take two. I move that the governing board approve policy, BAA, evaluation of school board, board self-evaluation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Finch?
The BAA evaluation of school board, remember, this started with legislations. That's what started this ball. The, we previewed it on March eleventh. We did receive some updates from ASBA, but we, you'll see them, the ones in yellow there, that were the recommendations, but there's, they're not language changes, but more clarity language, or clarity corrections. So it still follows the ASBA recommendation if you approve it, and we'll maintain the copyright symbol from ASBA.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. Any discussion from the board on BAA?
I just want to invite the community to re- I just want to invite the community to read our policy on adopting policies because doing it this way is not the way it's done in policy. At no time in policy is are they to be put on consent agenda. And at no time are they supposed to be just told to us and provided to us, this is where discussion occurs and the board decides on their policies. Because they're board policies, not superintendent policies. I would like to know, though, how can we maintain their copyright if we're not completely taking what they have in copyright? Copyrights are specific.
Yeah, that.
So what do they say?
If we adopt it, we'll be adopting their policy.
So the marked up version that we see inside board docs is the ASBA policy and that is what is being proposed tonight?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pass this five of.
Next item on the agenda, item four C, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board approve policy BEDBA, agenda preparation and dissemination as recommended.
Second.
Dr. Finch?
BEDBA, this is the one we talked about last meeting, March eleventh. Since then, we did receive policy advisory from ASBA. They were recommending that we merge the two. They're on a emerging kick at the moment, but we're not required to do that. And so I recommend that we keep them separate. I think they're clear when they're separate. Again, that's your choice, but the edits that ASBA has done there doesn't change the language or to keep the vice president involved with the board meeting consultation due to potential open meeting violations that we've talked about many times before. You did ask for two legal opinions. We went and got those. They're attached, one from Udall Shumway and one from Gus Rosenfeld. And basically, they're, the summations, as you probably saw, were that our current policy is not illegal, but they do recommend that we get away from that for the potential for OML violations. And that's something I've been talking about since we changed it in twenty seventeen. So, and ASBA also does not recommend it. So, but you're welcome to, I do have the policies here or the opinions here if you don't have access to them, but I think you do. So that is the recommendation of our two sets of attorneys and ASBA that we remove the vice president because of a potential to have three members talking about a subject.
Any discussion for Dr. Finch?
Actually, none of these. What we asked for was to have legal come and speak with us and review this with us, which is the way we used to do it.
No, that's not what you asked.
However, in reading the opinions that you received, one, it does say that, no, it is not illegal. Two, the question phrase to Rob Hawes, we did not say, or I did not say, or a member did not say that he approved it. What we said was it was approved by our attorneys at the time. I don't know what attorney it was. We also talked about the three, two, two, one, which Denise did put a summary in her opinion, which she also opined that our policy is not a violation of open meeting laws. Because it explained that the two, two, one was the superintendent having meetings, question and answer meetings with two, and then having, again, meetings with two, and then having meetings, full meetings with one. They were full discussions. It's much more similar to our superintendent having meetings with individuals and influencing them prior to the meetings and then them coming here and voting as they were instructed. It's, I want to be clear, the only reason to change this policy is to ensure that the board will have zero say in what Mr. Carver and Mr. Finch put before the board. They, we have repeatedly made requests that are valid requests, multiple board members have made requests, and they've all been ignored. And so on a three, two board, I accept that I'll lose on this one, I'm sure. But this policy has no valid change other than to silence the board and remove oversight.
Anybody else before I?
Yes, please.
Yes, Dr. Pack?
So I'm a rural follower and I'm currently the vice president. I would not unseat myself. People think Ms. Fisher and I are talking. We're not. People, I want to talk to Paul, but we're both so busy, we can't seem to do that. So they always say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. For now, I feel like it, in two thousand seventeen, it was decided then and we did get legal opinions saying it's not illegal to do it. You know, if we walk on a straight and narrow, we haven't had any violations. And I feel like let's leave it the way it is.
Actually, we have one about every three weeks, about once a month, we get a potential for it because what happens is one board member doesn't want to interact with the president, so she sends her request to another board member who happens to be in the vice president's chair. So that, the minute you do that, it is an, it is an open meeting violation when you come and talk about it at the meeting with the superintendent. The reason why we haven't been filed against yet is because you, as a board, haven't decided to do that. So the potential, every time that happens, and it's happened at least a dozen times since I've been the superintendent, that we have a board member that continues to include the vice president if they don't like the president. And so right away, you get three people that have already talked about a subject. And that isn't, in my mind, that's an open meeting violation. If nothing else, it's the impropriety or the appearance of impropriety. So it's something that we have to be super careful about. Again, we've, we, it's not an open meeting violation until it is.
That's absolutely inaccurate, though. That deliberation is not a request. Every meeting, when I make my requests, I have a spreadsheet, I send it to all board members, it's presented here first, which is why it's not a violation. And making a request is not a violation. Any lawyer, the attorney general will tell you, I could send a request to all board members and says, I want a budget study discussion. Not a violation. I want a discussion, it's just a discussion. If I were to then say, if I were to say instead, I want a budget studies question, session because these dollars are going here and this is where they shouldn't go, and these dollars are going there and this is where they shouldn't go, and this teacher said this to me and this person said that to me, now we're deliberating, especially if somebody responded. It's a fallacy to try and convince anyone that a request is a violation. It is not. And there are opinions already in place that state that it is not a violation. And again, there is no valid reason to remove the VP other than to secure whatever certain individuals are up to.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Simicak, do you have anything?
No, I do want to share that I had the opportunity to go through the two opinions from two different attorneys. And in this, in the, knowing what I have witnessed as a board member with copying on emails and discussions that I know have happened, I think for the safety of our school board, this is something we really need to take into consideration so that we don't have a violation of open meeting law. It's great we haven't had one yet and let's keep it that way, but let's not, let's make sure that we're taking the right steps, given the landscape of how things are right now, that we protect our school board to make sure that we are not violating. And I just want to throw out there that at one point I was going to be nominated as the vice president and given this situation, I can say that had I been chosen as vice president, I would agree to what's being presented and I would agree that for the safety of the board that we have just the president present. And I feel very comfortable providing any requests that I have directly to him. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simicak. I'll just chime in here with, I was at a community meeting at the request of an organization to discuss things that go on in school districts and including Deer Valley. And this topic came up and, you know, the sole reason that this topic came up has nothing to do with any nefarious underlying tones, as some people might pontificate, but rather the fact that something happened in Scottsdale that precipitated the two-by-two-by-one notice, which caused the attorney general to have to send a notice out to all districts to caution us as to the type of meetings that we're holding. And as I mentioned last time, and I'll mention again, and as I mentioned at the meeting I was invited to, it's the appearance of impropriety that will get you slapped with an open meeting violation, not necessarily even intent or whether or not you committed it, but does it look like? And all somebody has to do is come up with a fantastical enough story to make it sound like we're not being true to the intent of the open meeting law. And that's the quickest way for a board member to get removed from their post is to have the attorney general come yank you out by short hairs for not following the OML rule. So the reason this comes before us isn't because anybody's trying to do anything. I need the community to understand that these meetings are a business meeting so that the district can conduct its business to pay its bills, to get its curriculum, to hire its teachers, and that can't be done without a board vote. It can't be done in closed doors, it can't be done in secret sessions, it has to be done out here where everybody can see it. So I'm not exactly sure what the nefarious purpose is that this would be, but the one thing that I tried to drive home to the organization I met with is that school boards don't write laws. We craft policy as one of our jobs that we're saddled with, according to Arizona State Constitution, and our policies have to fall within the laws. Now, if we openly challenge the legitimacy or need of a law by walking that fine line or promising that we're not going to do anything wrong, when or if it ever happens that you do something wrong, everybody that voted yes is guilty, runs the risk of getting slapped about the head and shoulders by the attorney general. So we take an oath to follow the constitution of the great state of Arizona and to abide by its statutes. That's about as difficult as this whole process gets. Is our policy currently illegal? No, but there were two requests made from two separate attorneys on their thought process and they both said almost exactly the same thing. And they both come from different, different places in the valley. They both said, nope, it's not illegal, but if you're asking us our opinion, you need to change it, you need to go to just the president and the superintendent, like ninety-nine percent of the school districts in the state, doesn't make it right. One person, you know, ten people jump off a cliff, you don't follow them. But if there's only one other district in the state that's got our policy, we're probably not in a position of safe harbor. So that's just something to consider. Not everything is a personal attack, not everything has evil undertones. Sometimes rules are there and they can be inconvenient for some people, but that's my two cents. Dr. Finch, anything to wrap up with?
Just that ASBA also recommends that we only, and only have the president in that room. So that's three out of three, recommend that we don't do it. Again, it's not because we have or have been caught, it's the appearance of impropriety that gives, can give Deer Valley a black eye.
That's, that's.
One follow-up question. The way it's currently written, and it was fine for five years now, the president, superintendent and the vice president or designee does the agenda review. If the vice president and/or designee is removed, it would just be the president and superintendent. What happens? God forbid, something happens to the president and you're sick. You're not available to make it. Business gets held up if the vice president can't step in.
The vice president steps in and it says that. Yep. The vice president would step in, correct.
Your, the problem is, is we're, you're failing to point out one seriously major concern. Board members have no authority beyond what occurs in this meeting, none. So if nothing ever gets on the agenda of substance, the board cannot correct, cannot oversee, cannot fix, cannot do anything because it doesn't come to the meeting. And that's, that's the reason that we put in that additional person, to ensure that concerns are brought to the board. Because we had at the time an individual who would not bring them to the board, kind of like we're in the situation now, where things are not brought before the board that should be, things are not being done by the board that should be. Policies are not being followed, but what do you do about it? There's no oversight. So when you have, and yes, it is nefarious to not bring stuff before the board as an effort to not address actual valid issues, that's the reason the VP was added. And by removing the VP, again, we are in a situation where one individual who has openly in meetings before just dismissed concerns of the public without review, with another individual who only wants to paint a picture, we're left with not addressing anything. We're not following law, we're not following statute, and we're definitely not following our own policies. So how can we believe that not having any input in the agenda would help anything?
I have one follow-up. Just, you know, take another look at this. When you have the vice president in this process, it's a great learning tool for the vice president. Not saying I'll ever become president, but now I understand the system better, the process, I understand how the machine works, as you say. So being in that is, makes our board stronger because now the vice president, whoever is in that seat at the moment, understands the process and works collaboratively with the president and the superintendent. So removing the vice president would then, in some effect, hinder the board to be as strong as it could be because that vice president is not learning on the job about how it works if that vice president is vice president again or president. Or has to step in if the president is not available. You'd be a deer in headlights because you'd have no idea what the process is. I'm understanding the process as a VP because I've been to three of them now, two and a half. And so there is a benefit to having a vice president be another set of eyes and ears and collaborating.
Thank you, Dr. Pack. My follow-up question to you, Dr. Finch, is the marked up policy that Mr. Hawes sent as part of his legal opinion does address the concern that Dr. Pack had about who fills in if the president's not available, it actually spells it out. So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be, I mean, I hate to just drag things out, but I wonder if that wouldn't be a better option for us to utilize this version for consideration? I mean, it doesn't change the fact that the vice president's still removed from the meeting, but it does add some key points that kind of details the policy a little bit better. So I mean.
You have the right as a board to pace, sure. I would only cut pace from attorneys, but then I don't have to send it back to them.
Right, right. I mean, to that point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy BEDBA presented by Mr. Hawes for consideration. Four C. Anybody interested in seconding that? It was provided in the update with the legal opinions in an email from Sheila. In vibe?
Again, it still puts the entire agenda on two individuals who have already displayed that they don't want to bring anything before the board. No discussions, no. Um, no discussions, no, um, no respect for the board's, um, duties as laid out in Arizona revised statutes.
The, um, the vice president, um, is in other places in the, your board policy. So if you're ever not available-
Right. Yeah, it's listed in several other places that they fill in.
You can put it here again if you'd like.
Uh, for the benefit of those that may not have it in front of them, I'll just quickly read through the way that it would read without the strikeouts. Superintendent will prepare board meeting agendas in consultation with the board president. In the event the board president is not available, the vice president. The board president, vice president, if the board president is not available, and the superintendent on behalf of the governing board as a whole, may place items on the agenda. Any board member proposing an item for consideration or placement on the agenda will notify the superintendent of the particular item of business at least five working days before the meeting. If two or more board members request an agenda item, it will be placed on an agenda within 60 days. If an agenda item is tabled, it may be placed on a subsequent agenda by following the process stated above. Also, when there's a successful motion to move an item to a future meeting, it will be placed on the next agenda or the agenda date stated in the motion to postpone. Uh, the agenda and supporting materials shall be distributed to the board members no less than 24 hours prior to the meeting. Upon request, copies of the agenda shall be available to the public and the press. So that is the corrected marked up version from legal counsel. Uh, there is one, two, three, four, five, six changes made, uh, to the policy as it, uh, as the, to the proposed, uh, changed policy that's out there right now. So we do have the first and a second. There's been discussion. Any further discussion? Uh, Stephanie, you did.
I made the second.
I would like to request that the opinions be put in board docs for the public to view. Um, since we've already discussed them, they're not client, attorney-client privileged anyways. Um, and I would also like to note that one of the attorneys, um, also noted other districts who have the full board participate or have multiple. We are not the only governing board that has more than one individual. However, we are the, uh, only one that I know of seeking to have less transparency and less input, uh, rather than more.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Ms. Steele, when you're ready, sorry.
If you have to hit refresh so you can see the actual motion. It is on the screen here. If that looks correct to you, Mr. Carver, that motion you made?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
They're going to approve the amendment first. Amendment version first. Vote on amendment.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
Passes three, two.
Now, the a- amendment has passed, so the way that it's supposed to work is now we vote on adopting the policy. As amended. So, all those in favor?
Alright.
Ayes. Second.
You're good, Stephanie.
Day. Day.
You might have to hit refresh again.
Hit refresh.
Yep, I did.
Thank you. Onto item four D, Dr. Pack.
I move that the governing board approve policy B E D D, rules of order as recommended.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Finch.
This one, uh, was also discussed on March 11th, uh, at that last meeting. And this was really about the, to memorialize the, uh, five-minute, uh, concept, uh, for board members that we've used for a couple of years, year and a half now. Um, we did receive a policy advisory from ASBA. Again, there, they were, uh, recommending that we merge these to B E D D and B E D. Uh, but we're not required to do that. And again, I think it's more clear when they're separate, so, um, but, uh, we recommend the ASBA edits wouldn't change the language anyway. So, um, I think the, the goal we were after was memorializing the, the five-minute, uh, time limit. So that's what we added there in G.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. Again, for the community, this stems from a, whatever you want to call it, board retreat work session that took place in February of, uh, '23, I believe it was, where all board members present agreed in principle that we would limit our board reports to five minutes to help expedite meetings. What's this? Um, so there was a request from the community that we codify that in policy. So that's how that entered on, uh, this request. Is there any discussion for this policy B E D D?
Yes.
Yes, this-
Mrs. Dr. Pack was first, Mrs. Fisher?
Go ahead. I want to read this.
Okay, Mrs. Fisher?
This, um, you know, it's kind of ironic that this whole thing, uh, started as an a- attempt to silence the board. Um, certain individuals, they've, they've taken upon their mission to silence their, the, the Republican P- precinct committee men, silence the community, silence our parents, exclude our parents, silence our teachers. Um, and now they want to actually silence. The thing that I thought was funniest was that you, um, this all started saying, we can't have these 45-minute board reports and we have that one member that loves to talk 45, 50 minutes. Basically putting everybody, um, kind of in a, a little bit of a, wow, poor, poor board president, all those really long, um, meetings. One of my community members asked me, so is that true? And I said, you know what? I don't know. We have some that are long, some that are short. Everybody's kind of gone over. You'd have to actually go back and look. Much to my surprise, this individual actually went through the last seven and a half years of board meetings and put the time down of every single board report. Sent me the data. I aggregated it. What I just gave the board is just the max, the, the, the top. And then at the very top is one meeting from, um, back in 2016. The longest board report, uh, was by Ms. Ordway of 21 minutes, not an hour, not 50 minutes. The second one was myself. It was 20. But if you notice, every other board member except for our two new ones, they had the opportunity, have gone over. Ms. O'Brien's max was six minutes. Ms. Frank was 10. Dr. Tweedy was 11. Um, Ms. Paperman was, her max report was seven. Um, Ms. Reed, her max report was 17. Uh, Mr. Carver's max report was seven. Mrs. Simicek's was eight. Dr. Pack, four. Uh, Mr. Botfield, one. And the max superintendent, now this is only Finch, uh, because it was only the seven years, was 13. The other thing that was kind of a surprise that they found was that our reports were very different in the past. Um, when the superintendent gave his report, he didn't talk, uh, and do his own report. He would maybe have a couple of minutes where he would say something and then he would refer to staff who, who, um, are the boots on the ground doing the work and over the departments and they would prevent, present their information. So a lot of those were, um, at zero because they were just different, they were done differently. The other thing that was, uh, uh, really interesting to see is that, um, the more the community, the board, the teachers, the, 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 everybody is trying to be silenced, the longer the reports got. Um, so I would say the reports got longer out of necessity because contrary to board ethics and board norms and state statute, nothing is discussed. Um, this attempt to silence everyone so that, God forbid, anybody know the truth or transparency of any sort. Um, so this, this came about as an effort to simply silence, um, anyone daring to say the truth about any subject. Um, and that's, that's concerning. So, um, the data doesn't show that this, uh, adding this to the policy is necessary at all.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Uh, Dr. Pack?
Yes, so I was one of the board members that was inquiring about it because community members are saying, well, is it in the policy? Is there a five-minute rule? There's not a five-minute rule and I'm a rule follower. So I did, just digging. And at some retreat before my time, that was cited, but we're not bound as a current board to follow that. So if that's something we want to follow, we need to put it in the policy. I teach first graders. We follow the rules. Well, rules keep us safe. But if it's not, uh, in the policy and we, and we can try to condense some of our conversations and add discussion items back to the agenda, which we've talked about. Um, I don't know that the five-minute rule is needed. And as Mr. Botfield said, sometimes it does take longer than five minutes. Um, I'm a rule follower. I always try to keep my five minutes. I did ask if I could yield my time. That's apparently not a thing on school boards, just in legislatures. But, um, being problem solvers that we are, you know, I don't know that we need to slap a time limit on it. I looked at all the other school districts. None of them had a time limit on their board reports. One district had a two-minute time limit, but they had a very hefty discussion, uh, time. And so I feel like, again, let's, let's not muddy the water and, and not put something on there that we, we don't need. So no time limit is what I feel we don't need.
Thank you, Dr. Pack. Mr. Botfield, any comments? Ms. Simicek?
Yes, um, I would love to speak from my personal experience over the last two and a half years. Year and a, uh, year and a half ago around when I first came on, there was a particular board member who was taking an excessive amount of time during board reports. And the concern I had about it was that the topics that were being discussed had nothing to do with our students, had nothing to do with our staff. It became more of a, what I would call a therapy session for this particular member. And it got to the point where our meetings would go on for hours and hours and hours and so much of it. So I'm not sure where these times were pulled from, but I can speak from, from a very short period of time of being here, what I witnessed in that first year. And that is what I witnessed, um, when we were able to put the five minutes on and follow that. We s- I, I have no problem with our meetings going on when we're discussing topics that have to do with our students and our c- community and our teachers and our schools. But I do have a problem when one particular board member takes full advantage of that and proceeds to go on forever. And this was put into place to prevent that from happening. It requires that you, you know, think about what you want to say in your board report. Um, report, board reports are used for sharing, um, what you've done over the last several weeks. Um, just communications you've had, events you may have gone on. They're not a time to personally, um, bash other board members or the superintendent. And that's exactly what was happening. So I strongly support the five-minute rule because it has made our meetings so much smoother. And, um, we've really been able to focus and stick to business besides per- people's personal problems and, and get done what we needed to get done. So I support this 100%.
Thank you, Ms. Simicek. And just a little bit more background for the community and, and for the benefit of our two board members that weren't here for that, uh, retreat. The, the request was made by the then board president, Ms. Paperman of ME to come to that meeting prepared on, the topic was bring ideas on how we can save time during our meetings because our meetings, uh, chronically ran 10, 11, 12 o'clock. And the only reason some meetings ended at 12 o'clock was because these lights turn off automatically in the gate at the front parking lot locks. So if you don't want to stay the night, get out by 12. Um, so Mrs. Paperman gave some of us an assignment for that retreat and my assignment was tell us how we can save time. She picked me because of my experience in business and trying to manage a whole bunch of things from people to time to results. And the, the idea that I came up with is that our agenda needed to have time limits on it. Most official business-type agendas do, whether you're in corporate America or at your local legislative district meeting. There are times that may not be published on the agenda as you see it. But any group of leaders worth their salt has an idea of how much time we're going to spend on each topic so that we can be to the point, so that we can be about the business of the business and then move on. So my proposal to the board at the time was that we limit our board reports to five minutes because simple math, there's six of us, that's a half hour. And if we finished right now and just went through everything else and finished it, we have potentially a half hour worth of public comment and a half hour worth of board reports. And as other members up here have said, I'll stay here as long as it takes to be about the business of the district. But in some cases, and as I've mentioned before, uh, gentlemanly rules are only for those people that will behave in a gentlemanly fashion. And then sometimes even as grown adults, we have a hard time following well-established practices and agreed-upon rules. So during that meeting, when I pointed out that we had run over the five minutes to a board member that was part of that conversation and the community came back and said, well, if it's a rule, it needs to be a policy. So that's how we get here. It's not a matter of anybody trying to silence anybody. It's a matter of trying to put what was originally a handshake agreement between previous board members into policy so that future boards can benefit from the structure and hopefully not be wandering around in the dark, uh, when we change over large numbers of board members. So that is the reason. And it's five minutes. Adjust it. Don't adjust it. Vote yes. Vote no. We're here because the community's asked us to be. Dr. Finch?
Um, I was looking at these numbers, the, the max of Ms. Ordway, uh, 21 minutes, that was her last meeting. Uh, no, no question about that, that she was given that extra time on her last meeting. That's the only time she ever went. As my memory. And the 13 minutes for me, that, that is also incorrect. Um, if it was post-five minutes, I've never gone over. If anything, 30 seconds tops. I usually stop on time. So this information is incorrect as well. Uh, we've, we've, uh, that five-minute rule has been productive. It, it tells board members to stick to, um, what the topics are that are important. And, uh, and I think Ms. Simicek summed it up the best. It's supposed to be about your interactions with, uh, the, the machine and how you've, uh, contributed to the machine and things you've went to and things in the legislature that impact us, um, those kinds of things. That's what the board report is supposed to be.
Greg, thank you, sir.
I'd like to point out that, you know, well, number one, it's not incorrect. It is, and it, yes, it was her last meeting that was her longest. Um, but no, she went over it other times as well. Um, this isn't about Ms. Ordway or whatever, uh, story wants to be created about her. Um, if you really want to make these meetings productive, change the agenda review back to what it used to be when Dr. Whiteheimer was here. When I was board president with Dr. Whiteheimer, I went into the first, oh, five minutes of cabinet, five, maybe 10 minutes. And cabinet would say, well, we have this presentation. We have that presentation. We're doing this. And we would sit there and we would with the agenda, with a mock agenda and say, okay, how long is that presentation? And one of whoever it is would say, well, it's going to be about five minutes. Oh, it's going to be about 10 minutes. It would be about four minutes. And Dr. Whiteheimer and I would look when they had a really, really long one, we'd say, can we trim it? And we would trim down presentations to, to be meaningful, um, and not just long. And, but we would have more constructive conversations. When it changed was when we removed the board from actually establishing the board meeting agenda. We removed the board from having input on any topic and, um, the presentations got longer and longer. Um, we had agenda, um, presentations that- Um, we had agenda, um, presentations that even the people who are saying, why do I have to speak this long about this? And they get to the point where they're unlimitedly, you know, an hour, two hours, however long. As a business meeting, if a, if, if, and we did this in the agenda review, if there was a topic that any of our administrators needed to talk about that was that long, we planned a study session so they could actually say everything and they could get the conversation, we could have that. Um, because we had meaningful board meetings. Um, so to trim it by just silencing, the other thing that was removed from the agenda um, was requesting items and talking about future items. Um, so little by little, over the last seven years, this agenda has changed to completely one hundred percent remove the board from their duties in Arizona revised statutes. And that's a problem, in my opinion.
May I respond? Two things about five minutes. First, you can repeat the five minutes. Second, sometimes five minutes isn't enough. I get that. But more importantly, rules are important for any kind of meeting, and that's the point.
Can I just add, at any business meeting, if somebody starts talking about their dog or whatever is not on topic, you call a point of order and get it back on. And I believe we could do that if a board member was going over time. I think that was suggested actually in this, back and forth of this policy change.
We've actually tried that, didn't work. Uh, turned into a shouting match. We did try that, though.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. I think we drained that. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yep, and any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, please.
Democrat versus Republican, that's just what it comes out to.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Um, item five, consent agenda, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board approve. Hold on, it popped up, let me click it. Does he get it? All right, five A. I move that the governing board approve consent agenda items five A through five K.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Semencheck?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Fisher.
Because there are things hidden in the consent agenda, and I do mean hidden, um, I'm going to vote nay. For transparency's sake.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item six A, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board ratify employee out-of-state travel for professional development per governing board policy G C C C E.
Second, thank you, Mr. Botfield. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item six B?
Move to accept.
Oh, she's got a, she's got a motion first.
Six B. I move that the governing board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the revision of the FY twenty-four annual financial report.
Mr. McGlorino?
Uh, President Carver, members of the board, Dr. Finch. Um, I, this, this is a, uh, maybe a mixed bag, um, uh, matter. Uh, it's unusual for us to have a revision to our annual financial report, especially this late in the game. But as a result of our third-party audit, which is on the agenda later this evening as a preview item, uh, we did find that there was some misreporting in the annual financial report. Um, and that's why we have these third-party audits, is to make sure that this is, um, that it, that we have audited, uh, statements. And, um, what we have here tonight is the revision of that annual financial report, um, most of which had to do with, um, a misstatement of the revenue um, in various funds, and we'll kind of get into that on this slide here. Uh, so MNO revenue was restated to two hundred and seventeen million dollars expenses, um, which was a much smaller, uh, uh, delta was, uh, restated at twen- two hundred and seventy-one million. So the ending fund balance of twenty-eight, uh, point three million dollars. Um, likewise, capital revenue was, um, restated, uh, on the revenue side, uh, for thirteen point five. Uh, no change in expenditures, uh, but the ending fund balance obviously with the restatement of revenue at fo- five point six million dollars. Uh, within the debt service, uh, restated revenue to forty-seven point four million dollars. Expenses at forty-five point nine million dollars, ending balance of two point seven million dollars. In the debt service fund, Medicaid revenue restated to five point two million dollars with total expenses unchanged resulting in the ending balance of seven million dollars. Um, our, uh, federal stimulus money or ESER funds, um, sometimes referred to as COVID relief funds, um, revenue restated to sixteen point six million dollars, expenses at fifteen point five. Uh, ending fund balance are restated to seven point two million dollars. The instructional improvement fund, revenue was restated to two point four million dollars. Total expenses unchanged and the ending fund balance, um, at three point five million dollars. Uh, the auxiliary operation and tax credit revenue, uh, this is a little confusing. We actually use different fund numbers than what the uniform, uniform system of financial records, um, requires. So, uh, this was a little bit of a confusion with some of the new staff that we have within the finance department. But again, auxiliary operations, uh, restated revenue at three point six million dollars, expenses to three point one million dollars, oh, with the ending funding balance of four point two million dollars. And the tax cr- extracurricular tax credit revenue restated at one point six million dollars, expenses at one point five. Um, and the resulting ending fund balance at two point five million dollars. As a result of that, uh, we provide this synopsis whenever we do the annual financial report, uh, just so that, uh, you can see, uh, what ended up changing. Um, again, uh, I've bolded the, the amounts that have, uh, changed significantly here. The, uh, uh, you can see, I, I think the, uh, total expenses went from four hundred and seventy million to four hundred and seven million dollars, uh, so a- about three million dollars uh, for the entire expenses of the district is what we're talking about on the expense side. More of this was related to revenue. Did affect some of the percentages that, uh, we identified, um, you know, within the various categories. Um, this is actually what the, uh, MNO report would look like, you know, within the AFR, uh, or annual financial report, which we've included the entire annual financial report in the packet. Uh, but we always like to share what the percentage breakdowns are. Um, these did not change significantly. This is FY twenty-three, just for comparative purposes to FY twenty-four. This is a restated FY twenty-four. Again, not major changes in terms of the percentages. Uh, to help illustrate that, uh, instructional percentage in FY twenty-three, fifty-nine point four percent. Uh, restated instructional percentage here, fifty-nine point five percent for fiscal year twenty-four. So, um, again, it is unusual for us to revise the annual financial report. Uh, but this is, uh, the reason we have third-party audits, uh, to make sure that all of these numbers do tie out. Uh, and we'll be able to share information in the, um, preview item of the actual annual comprehensive financial report later in this board meeting. But I'd ha- be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. McGlorino. Dr. Pack?
Why are we using different codes than USFR? Why, why don't we use the same code? So keep it simple.
Uh, President Carver, uh, Dr. Pack, the, uh, the reason is the uniform system of financial records actually chose a fund number that we previously used when the extracurricular tax credit was initiated some twenty-some years ago. Uh, we had already start, used that code, and so the auditor general allows us to continue to using, using that code. Um, and so it's just because we had previously used that code and it was allowable. They happened to pick a code that we were using, so, um, we flipped the auxiliary operation and, and extracurricular tax credit funds. Uh, and, and again, it has been approved and allowed because we previously had it.
Just a follow-up question. What procedures do we have in place to ensure that we don't have errors in reporting?
Uh, President Carver, um, Dr. Pat, the, uh, uh, as we go into detail with the audit, we'll, we'll also talk about a corrective action plan for some of the items because the auditor did identify, um, some of these things. We are still investigating that, and the corrective action plan has not been completed. We just actually received the audit within the last, I'd say, ten business days. Um, so we are still in the process of, uh, developing. But whenever we have an audit, which is a, you know, a third-party, another set of eyes to look at our, uh, accounting records, um, we always develop a corrective action plan based on, uh, what their findings would be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlorino. Any further discussion for Mr. McGlorino?
One question. I, I've always wondered, and I've never asked, because you explained years ago why you did, what you just explained. Don't you roll visions every year, though? I mean, is it extensive to change it? The five-two-five and the five, because I, I mean, I've never tried to, but I mean, I know you roll it every year.
Yeah, uh, President Carver, um, Ms. Fisher, the i- in order for us to change, it would take two years to make the change. So we would have to pick a fund that's neither of the, uh, two funds that we currently use to move one of the funds into that fund for an entire year. And then we could move them back into the appropriate fund. So i- it's just, it would be an extensive and exhaustive, uh, period of time because of, uh, the encumbrance period and the, the funds itself. So it's, it would actually take two years to correct it, a, a minimum of two years to correct, uh, to correct the funds.
So you'd have to use a bogus fund to do that? Wouldn't that, again, be a finding?
Uh, it, it very well could be, uh, unless it was part of a larger plan, you know, an announced plan to, to identify why we were doing it, right? So there are funds that are not identified, um, you know, that-
Are they cash accounts?
Uh, within, within the range of, of accounts, not, not every numerical option, uh, has a, uh, an identified purpose for it. So we could pick something in the range that would, uh, be appropriate for the special revenue account that this is and, uh, move the money into there for a year to clear everything out and then move it back into the appropriate fund in a future year. Um, but it would take some effort, and because it has been approved, it, it really is more, uh, has more to do with the new staff that we have throughout the finance department that may have experience in areas where the account codes aren't in the fashion that they are for us than it has to do. So with time, it will probably be self-correcting, uh, because they'll have more years of experience using the account code structure that we're currently using. And it's only those two funds that we have the situation with auxiliary operation and extracurricular tax cred- tax credit, to be specific.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Botfield? Ms. Semencheck?
No questions.
Appreciate you. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item six C, Dr. Pack?
I move that the governing board accept the administration's to pre-approve the agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item seven A, previewing the NST salary recommendations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. McGlorino, you have a presentation for us?
Uh, President Carver, members of the board, uh, and Dr. Finch. Uh, we do have the salary recommendation for next year to share with you, uh, this evening. And I wanted to give, uh, recognition, I know some of the NST members are actually in the audience, uh, this evening. Um, here are the members of the negotiation solution team. Uh, we meet monthly. And, uh, you can see, uh, we still have two more meetings scheduled for April eighth and April, or, and May fifteenth, uh, pardon me. Um, and, uh, we have made a concerted effort over the many, uh, years to be able to provide financial information to the negotiation solution team throughout the year, um, in anticipation of developing a salary recommendation. Uh, it is noted that the, um, fiscal year twenty-six will be a challenging year for us as a district, uh, due to the MNO override not being renewed and the loss of students plus some inflationary, uh, factors. Uh, so all of that has been taken into consideration by the, um, N- NST. Uh, just some of the accomplishments so far to date. Um, the benefit recommendation, uh, that, um, that came out of the, uh, benefit work team was, uh, already approved, and we're in the process of, uh, putting that into, i- into, um, uh, im- implementing that for, for, for next year through our open enrollment, our employee benefit open enrollment process. And the salary rec- recommendation has been, um, agreed upon by the NST members. Uh, but it's here for a preview item just because we wanted to make sure that, uh, uh, it's still, I think, a work in progress. I think there were some emails that were exchanged today. Um, and part of our effort, uh, at this point, included actually putting the salary recommendation in the Deer Valley Voice, uh, the publication that we send to our, to our staff. Uh, so they had this information, uh, better than a week ago so that we can make sure that we're getting as much input in the process a- as possible. Um, so part of the budget assumptions for next year, I've already mentioned, um, that it's going to be a little bit of a challenging year, but there is an inflationary increase that we are anticipating, uh, at two percent. Uh, we are, um, uh, projecting nine hundred fewer students, uh, for next year. That's just the, uh, differential between the graduating, uh, seniors or twelfth graders and the pro- projected incoming kindergarten students. The MNO override, again, uh, being reduced by one-third is more than eleven million dollars, uh, in, in a reduction. Uh, teacher experience index, uh, went up just a slight tick, so that's, uh, some good news. Uh, we are planning on making an adjustment to the, uh, allocation of our district additional assistance or the capital funding in the formula, and moving more of that in MNO due to the override, uh, reduction. Uh, we have a, a estimated budget balance carry forward out of the end of, uh, this year. You know, unspent money from this year that we could, uh, carry forward into, to next year. Uh, and, uh, that's set at six million dollars. We hope that that mu- uh, dollar amount would be greater than six million dollars at the end of this year. Well, we're doing everything we can to try and include as many resources as, uh, possible to minimize, uh, the negative impact, um, on, uh, fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, the initial spring staffing, uh, um, and I, I want to, uh, draw attention to this because Dr. Pack was kind enough to provide a question related to this. And so this has been clarified that, uh, when we do the staffing, uh, this, this is not the class load. I know there was some conversation at the last meeting about a, um, a MOU or memorandum of understanding about changing the class load in the, in the handbook. Uh, this is not related to this. This is the numbers that we use to provide the staffing. Um, and so we increased that by one to help minimize surplus, uh, in the, in the year uh, because we are dealing with projection of student populations. Uh, so it's, it, this is not an intent to say that we're changing the, uh, staffing standard. It is how we, uh, do the initial staffing. And then Ms. Moffett and her team, uh, look at those things, um, to be able to make sure that if it is in an area where we know there is already going to be growth and they're gonna, it's gonna be close, uh, they will make adjustments as necessary to the FTE allocation based on the class load that is in the certified manual, the approved certified manual. So you just wanted to make that, uh, clarification and do thank Dr. Pack for the question. Um, the, uh, uh, as I mentioned previously, the benefit recommendation has been approved- Um, the, uh, uh, as I mentioned previously, the benefit recommendation has been approved. There was eleven percent increase, um, and the majority of that cost, or two-point-two-six million of it, uh, will be covered with the reserves that we have, um, with the Valley Schools Employee Benefit Group. Uh, slight decrease on this, uh, state retirement, uh, which will help benefit not only our employees, but also the matching share that the, uh, the district provides. Uh, likewise, with the alternative contribution rate or sometimes referred to as the A C R for those retirees that we have rehired. Um, this, uh, in terms of budget, uh, assumptions, we have no compensation increases, um, planned for, for the employees. And we are including a furlough day in the plan for next year. Uh, furlough day, just for clarification on definition, is a day that was scheduled i- in the calendar, which we would remove. Uh, so there's, um, not compensation for that day, but there's also no work expected for that day, uh, specifically targeting the first day that we return after winter break, which is January fifth, uh, for next year's calendar and trying to make sure that, um, everybody participates in that with the exception of our nine-month classified employees. They don't already have that day built into their calendar. They only have two days built into their calendar that are potential furlough days that are not, uh, school days. And those, uh, most of these employees, uh, actually work, uh, less than eight hours, some of them considerably less than eight hours, you know, four, six-hour, uh, uh, scheduled days. And to try and get everything that's needed, um, in two days, um, that's l- less than full workdays, uh, at the beginning of the school year is extremely difficult, uh, already. So we are recommending that the furlough day not, um, be part of the nine-month classified employees. Uh, and just to, uh, quantify this, um, it's about a thousand people and the, uh, e- entire cost of those a thousand people for that one furlough day was, uh, just to write at up about a hundred thousand dollars. So it wasn't significant enough for the impact, uh, for those nine-month employees. Uh, the classroom site fund eligible staff changes and compensation, uh, will be determined, uh, but hopefully by the end of this week or the, or, or start of next week, uh, we can include those in the actual, um, uh, salary recommendation when the board formally considers it. Again, this is a preview item this evening. Uh, professional growth amounts have been included. A slight increase on utilities, uh, due to rate increases, um, with, uh, Arizona Public Service. And, uh, everything else kind of is based on the current information that we know today. Um, we don't, we are not expecting any windfall of additional funds beyond the two percent inflation, uh, from the state legislature, but that, you know, could be subject to change. Um, we are not hearing of anything, um, that would, uh, would cause us to believe that there's, uh, a different amount, uh, to be expected. Just because, uh, I mentioned that there was no salary compensation included in, in the, the assumptions, um, in developing this salary recommendation. The, uh, this is just the history. Uh, there have been some salary increases that, um, uh, our employees have enjoyed over the, you know, last six years. Um, but again, this would be a no salary increase for fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, this is showing that, uh, the, the increase broken up between the three employee, uh, three employee group bargaining units that we have, the admin exempt group, the classified group and the certified group. And obviously with the twenty-by-twenty-twenty initiative, the teacher percentage is much greater than, uh, the other two groups, um, for that p- uh, period of time from, uh, going back to, uh, two thousand nineteen, fiscal year nineteen through, uh, the current year of fiscal year twenty-five, uh, almost, um, are just over forty-eight percent of an increase, uh, in, in the teacher salary compared to, uh, thirty, just under thirty-two percent for our admin exempt group and thirty, almost thirty-seven percent for our classified group. Should be worth noting, that does not include the one-time payments and other things that we have provided to our employees. That's true salary increase. All right. So here's the salary recommendation that the N S T group, um, ha- has worked on, uh, to date. And again, it is subject to, uh, some changes, uh, especially with the input from the board. Uh, here's what the professional growth I mentioned earlier. Uh, it's a small dollar amount, less than forty-three thousand dollars, uh, for, um, all of, all employee groups. And because we have not suspended the language that allows them to get credit for, uh, their professional development, uh, we would have this obligation if we weren't to fund it this year, uh, and it would be, uh, an additional amount for next year. You'd have the forty thousand dollars that you skipped from this year plus assuming another forty thousand dollars next year. So you'd have an eighty thousand dollar obligation. Uh, so I've mentioned to the group, if, uh, to the N S T group, I should say, um, if we want to do away with professional growth, we need to change the language and then wait for it to expire, uh, would be my recommendation. The, uh, uh, again, the recommendation's a little more simplified this year, uh, so we're not, uh, so concerned about, uh, how we're dividing up a raise, uh, between a percentage increase and a flat dollar increase, uh, basically just saying that daily rate would not change for, for employees, uh, for, for next year, uh, but the contract days would be reduced by the furlough day, uh, again, January fifth of two thousand twenty-six. Uh, likewise, classified hourly rates and starting pay would not change. Uh, I failed to mention that with the certified as well, that we're also recommending no change to the hiring schedule as well. Uh, but with the exception of, uh, the nine-month classified would not participate in the furlough day, but the ten-month and twelve-month classified employees would, uh, because they do have January fifth built into their work calendar currently. Uh, on the admin exempt side, uh, same, uh, scenario in which the, um, daily rate would not change, hiring schedule would not change, uh, but the contract days would be reduced by one day, uh, for that furlough day of January fifth. Um, the N S T also wanted to make sure that trigger language was included. So if any budget estimates are greater than two million dollars, this would require N S T to reconvene. Uh, this is a conversation that we were having as early as today, um, or as late as today, I should say, that, uh, N S T has an interest in making sure that bec- uh, if the furlough day remains as it is, that, uh, one of the first things that would be funded, uh, under this section is to, uh, reinstate the monetary loss for the furlough day for those that were impacted. Uh, so if the, um, if this trigger language was to be exercised, that, uh, we would make sure that those that were affected by the furlough day were, um, uh, were, were, uh, to benefit prior to the nine-month classified employees that weren't i- impacted by the furlough day, for example. Uh, so there could be some change in language, um, and that has not been looked at by the entire negotiation solution team, but it is something that we are having a conversation with, with, uh, w- with the group. Uh, so I wanted to make you aware of that. And then the classroom site fund amount needs to be determined. Uh, the allocation comes out from the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. It's scheduled statutory, statutorily to come out on the thirtieth of this month. Uh, we are expecting that it could be, it could come out as late as, um, next week as, uh, as potential, as late as next week, uh, potentially. Uh, once we have those dollar amounts, we would bring that information and include it in the salary recommendation as well. Um, in terms of next steps, so we would like to publish the employment contracts by March twenty-eighth and include the furlough day so our employees are aware that this is happening, um, with the anticipation of the board approving this. So we do want to have some input on the board, uh, from the board regarding, um, the furlough day itself. Uh, we would bring the formal recommendation back on the eighth of April for, uh, for the board to consider. Um, we'd have a budget revision on May thirteenth for the current budget, current year budget. And then we would start the, uh, approval process for the proposed budget for next year and, um, uh, we would have the formal, uh, adoption of the expenditure budget by, uh, July fifteenth, which is required by statute. So that's the presentation that I have, uh, for the board this evening and be happy to answer any questions aboard my head.
Any questions for Mr. McGlorino? Oh, by the way, before we get down that road, I'm sorry, Ms. Simicheck dropped at eight-fifteen?
Correct.
For those of you keeping track at home.
Yep.
Mrs. Fisher?
Um, I guess I don't really have any questions. All I can tell you is what teachers have brought forward. They have, um, said that, um, it bothers them that furlough days are being put on them or, or cut, any cuts towards them are being aimed when we have yet to have a budget study session. We have yet to talk about areas where we could address budget shortfalls, not on the backs of our teachers, not on the backs of our children or our students or our classrooms. Um, and, uh, I have to agree with them. Um, I, I, all I told them is I, I can't say why. You'd have to talk to either your association or your admin or, I don't know, come to the meetings and speak up, but they're too afraid to do that. So, um, they just shared that with me and, and I have to agree with them. I don't think we should put all the cuts on the backs of our teachers or the backs of our kids without considering anything else.
Yep. President, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, I mean, it is one of the things that we are trying to minimize the impact to our staff, um, but eighty-five percent of our budget is in salaries and benefits. Um, and if you look at one-third of what was in the M and O override, you know, funded by the override, um, it would have been, uh, like two and a half percent or two-point-six percent, to be precise, uh, reduction in, uh, salary for all employees. Uh, the furlough day is a half a percent, um, just dividing one into a hundred-and-eighty-six day, uh, contract. So it's, it's a much smaller impact and, um, the employees are actually, uh, giving up a workday for that half a percent reduction. So we have taken that into consideration. Um, we're not taking one-third of the, a set aside that was allocated in the override for, for employees. Um, and we're trying to do something that there is some offset for, uh, but, but you are right. The employees, all the employees that would be furloughed would receive one day of less pay in fiscal year twenty-six.
And with our, uh, contract, uh, it's not all employees, not, I think this isn't just district office versus school, but with our administrative contract that we've received so far, twelve-point-eight million dollars is not in our classroom right off the bat. And there's no discussion on any reductions at all. You know, we have three-point-eight million in the curriculum department. We have, you know, two-point-eight million in student support services, which I understand special education takes a lot. Um, but in the past, we've looked at the potential to say, okay, we have an empty classroom here, we need a teacher. We have this former teacher at the district office, maybe we could tighten here and put that teacher here and that's just a little tiny bit more. Um, we've had none of those constructive conversations. We've made no effort to trim areas or go back to efficiency. Uh, the last efficiency study, I believe, was pushed into even being done by me and that was back in twenty-seventeen. Um, maybe it's time we look at some little efficiencies. Um, I am just not comfortable. We fought. When I got on this board for the first time in twenty-fifteen, our teachers had not seen a, a raise in a decade. They received one-time payments where they would get two percent or one percent or three percent one-time payment, but at the beginning of their next contract, it always was the same dollar amount. They never advanced, they were always held back. And in twenty-sixteen, we put a lot of work into taking that scatter plot chart where our poor teachers were just all over the place, uh, you know, long-term dedicated teachers were jumped over by newly hired teachers and we had a mess that we fixed. And we worked really hard, all of us together. And we started putting their increases into their base pay so that next year their contract is just a little bit more. Even if A S R S took that just a little bit, they could at least see a growth. And, and I know this year A S R S is down, that's good, that's a little bit of a break, but, um, it's time we revise that sc- scatter plot again, cause I'm hearing the same thing. We have new teachers jumping over, longtime teachers, we have inconsistencies, we have, y- you know, there's, uh, without full looking at it all in detail and working together, I, I'm just not comfortable cutting my teachers for any reason, you know, and it just is, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Anyone else?
So I would like to just point out that every raise besides the twenty percent red-for-ed raise that came out a few years ago, uh, is because districts robbed from Peter to Penny Paul. State does not give us more money every year to pay teachers more money. When we pay teachers more money, it's because we're taking money from something else to give them more money. So it's a lesser of two evils thing because the pie doesn't get any bigger. It's all a matter of how do we want to cut the pie up this year so that everybody feels valued and getting paid what it is that they feel that they deserve to get paid with the benefits that they want. Um, I have watched over the last few years, the N S T team with the budget and D V E A working with the administrat- and, uh, it is, I'm, I'm, I don't want to say the word happy, but it is good to see that there is a level of realization with the people that do show up to these meetings that there's only so much pie. So what can we do? We know, last year, I remember the conversation last year when we were discussing raises. We knew that there was the opportunity that next year there may not be. So we gave a raise last year and we did the best that we could to mitigate the increase in insurance last year. Now we've done the best that we can to mitigate the increase in insurance again this year. And worst-case scenario came to fruition, the raise does not look like it is being considered by the groups that are responsible for having that discussion because the pie did not get any bigger. So I want to commend everybody that's involved in the process because they're understanding the situation. We all, regardless of our job in society, want to make more. We do what we can to make ourselves as valuable as possible. I believe all of us in this room would agree that we want to pay our educators as well as we can. We went over numbers earlier tonight that showed that administrative dollars in this district are lower than the state dollars, are competitive with our peer dollars. And you're not going to get much money out of the folks that are in administration to try to give other folks a raise. And then that also brings into account the buckets, and you guys have heard me mention buckets before. The administration bucket includes a lot of things that actually involve direct classroom assistance, whether it's mentor teachers and different things like that. So, uh, we, we need to make sure to not get caught in the weeds when we're talking about dollars and when we're talking, uh, looking at graphs because there's a lot of things behind the scenes that we do the best that we can to pull out of these conversations that we're having for the community. But we need to be a little bit more business-minded when we're having these conversations because, as I said, the pie is only so big. Um, again, I appreciate the work that everybody has gone through in the presentation, Mr. McGlorino, but I just felt like I should throw that out there because I, I, I also, I, I, I'm sorry, let me back up for a minute. I also need the community to know that each board member has been given the opportunity to see the napkin sketch, if you will, of where there might be money to move around so that we can try to push off the pain of the lack of M and O funds next year. I mean, it's eleven million dollars, you got to find it someplace, but we've all been given the opportunity. So if any one of the five board members haven't taken that opportunity, that's on them. We've all seen the, the numbers, we've all had a conversation to be able to understand the why. Where's it coming? Well, can't we do this? Why, why do you think that? So those conversations are available for those that care to have them and I just need the community to understand that. Um, thank you, Mr. McGlorino.
I'd like to ask when we've had these conversations because, uh, the conversations should happen in this boardroom and they have not happened. So when are these conversations occurring?
Whenever you want one.
You and I don't speak.
Well, and there lies the problem, Mrs. Fisher.
That's by your choice. And you either, Mr. Carver, you were asked about a board agenda item and you walked away.
I will meet with you anytime on Zoom, as long as I can push record.
Oh, I record all the time because I don't trust you because you lie.
You record when people don't think you're recording.
No, I record, no, I record when-
We're getting off topic here. Item seven B, Mr. McGlorino, when you're ready. Thank you.
Well, just silence the board once again.
Um, the last preview item that we have this evening is the, uh, audit that I previously mentioned and, um, I do want to give recognition to the audit firm, C W D L. Uh, they were able to help us, um, uh, work through the challenges that I, I previously mentioned caused the revision of the, um, annual financial report that, uh, I previously talked about. Um, you know, some legislative changes have required that the governing board now accept the audit by roll call vote. Um, uh, we are previewing it here this evening so you can- Um, uh, we are previewing it here this evening so you can kind of see what some of the findings are as a result of the audit. Uh, the actual uh, annual comprehensive financial report, or we refer to as A C F R um, is uh, available, it's uh, rather lengthy, it's about ninety-eight pages um, in length. Um, there is a kind of executive summary, um, I'll draw your attention to, uh, starting on page nineteen is um, you know, if you want to look at the executive summary of the annual comprehensive annual annual comprehensive financial report. They changed the order of the acronym, so I have to slow down to, to, to say it. Um, as you can see here, the uh, um, the actual audit comprises of three documents, the A C F R, uh, the U S F R compliance questionnaire and the single auto reporting package are sometimes referred to as the S A R P. And uh, we provided all three of those uh, in the uh, in, in board docs. This provides the information on the compliance questionnaire. Uh, see, these would be the findings, uh, where the actual uh, auditors found areas that they have identified. Uh, in, uh, in no, no case, there's no, it's not a um, qualified opinion uh, from the auditors. If it were, that would mean that they did not uh, have confidence in the information. Uh, we just have to restate some information, uh, and they did note that as, as one of the findings. Um, those that are reported uh, with the asterisk uh, are the ones that were identified for this year. Um, the pound sign, uh, just for um, historical uh, significance, those were noted in the previous year. Uh, so i- in areas where you would have, you know, multiple years of findings of the same matter would mean that the corrective action plan that we developed was not being successful. Uh, but in many cases, because for example, cash and revenue, you can see that there's uh, a finding this year as well as findings in the previous year. Uh, but there are thirty items that are tested in that area, so there's probably not the same identical thing. Uh, just two different items uh, that were found with, among the thirty items that are on that U S F R questionnaire list. Uh, so now just to kind of go through the areas of non-compliance or what we refer to as the findings. Um, uh, so the coding of the U S F R ch- chart of accounts, uh, and this was just a um, honest mistake. Um, there are two I D A grants, one's a preschool grant and one is the I D A, our um, Title Six B grant. Um, they are separated by one digit in fund numbers and we posted the revenue uh, for I D A um, in the wrong uh, uh, grant in, in Fund Two Twenty-One instead of uh, Fund Two Twenty. We have now since corrected that, uh, but it obviously shows up as a finding here, uh, because it was initially done incorrectly. Uh, and then the reconciliation, uh, uh, quite frankly, if we would have um, been on top of the a reconciliation of cash, we would have found many of the items um, that the auditors found. Um, we had done the reconciliations up through the encumbrance period, it is during the encumbrance period, uh, which are the months, the three months after the fiscal year end, so uh, June, July, uh, excuse me, July and August, the two months after the uh, um, end of the fiscal year um, is where we uh, went awry with some of the posting. Uh, and it does become a little bit uh, complicated because uh, for example, the state does not provide the twelfth payment in state aid uh, in the proper fiscal year, they give it to us in July. It has to be uh, coded back into uh, the uh, correct year, which was the previous fiscal year. So there are some things that uh, cross over uh, fiscal years during that encumbrance period. Um, and so uh, the reconciliation during the encumbrance period, uh, again, especially knowing that we had new staff uh, working in this area, uh, was the cause of some of the um, uh, of the issues that were corrected in the annual financial report that the board approved earlier this evening. And we will develop an act, a corrective action plan for how to deal with uh, reconciliations to be able to identify those things much earlier than uh, waiting for the audit to, to expose those in the future. On the a- areas of uh, cash and revenue or in the budgeting section, uh, one of uh, eighty-two cash receipts um, in student activities uh, was not deposited in timely manner. We were given a week to deposit um, uh, proceeds. Uh, many times uh, the schools are collecting money for multitude of reasons. And um, if somebody is out or one of the systems breaks down, uh, the uh, the money might not be deposited within that uh, one-week timeframe. Uh, that was the case. Again, it was one out of eighty-two that they tested. Um, it was actually deposited in nine days instead of five days, so it wasn't like the, the proceeds were sitting around for months, uh, but again, it was not within the required timeline. And then uh, the deposits, um, this is a continuation of the reconciliation matter that was um, referenced on the previous slide. Uh, for accounting records, the uh, we did exceed the budget um, within the adjacent ways uh, by a very small amount. Um, but uh, unfortunately was not caught in the May revision a year ago uh, to be able to increase the adjacent ways amount. Um, we had the cash within the adjacent ways. The budget just wasn't increased enough to be able to a- accommodate for how much cash was already collected within adjacent ways. Again, a very small uh, um, uh, amount. And it also with debt service, again, doesn't change anything. Um, but our debt service payment uh, was not adjusted in May to be able to account for the anticipated uh, uh, payment that's made in the summertime. So we have a July payment that's due. Um, and we should have adjusted the, the budget in the May revision and did not uh, for the debt service account. Again, very small amounts, but it was more than uh, what was on the adopted revised budget. Uh, in the area of um, of uh, payroll, um, I see the title there says cash and revenue, that's not correct, but the area of payroll, uh, one I nine was not able to be identified for an employee. Um, and they tested twenty-five employees, but um, I, and Ms. Moffett might actually have a better e- estimate of this, but this is of, over uh, several hundred people that we would have hired um, in the, in the year. They've only tested twenty-five, but one of the twenty-five, uh, the I nine was not uh, correct in the employee's file. Uh, and the issue of financial reporting, uh, the A F R did not agree uh, with the uh, the accounting records. Um, but we did note that the A F R was being revised and since it has been revised, uh, this is uh, has been corrected, but again, was not correct at the time that they were doing the audit. And on the school, um, there, there is a food service annual financial report as well. It did not get submitted until October nineteenth, it was due on the f- um, on the fifteenth. Uh, so we were a little delayed in getting that uh, submitted to the Department of Education. Um, that's something that's easily rectified, but again, did not meet the correct timeline. And some of the expenditures, again, on the revenue side, um, and the commodities listing within the uh, food service A F R needed to be corrected and are part of the A F R that the board previously approved this evening. So in terms of timeline, uh, typically, uh, we start in the spring um, of uh, of, of the previous year um, to be able to uh, uh, pull together preliminary work. And then um, the audit will continue through the fall. And typically, we try and finish the annual comprehensive financial report by the end of December. Um, in this case, we're a little bit uh, tardy in uh, finishing it. It is technically due by the end of March, so the compliance questionnaire uh, has to be submitted to the Federal Clearing House and, and to the county stu- school superintendent and A D E and a number of sources, including the auditor general um, by the end of the month. So we are bringing it uh, forward for preview this evening and we'll bring it back uh, for you to have it um, uh, accepted at the April eighth um, uh, board meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions aboard my hat.
Any discussion from Mr. Miglerino?
Yes, yes. So I appreciate that you um, have corrective actions that you had last time and some of them worked and some didn't, and now you're looking at the reports and the findings and you're going to make corrective actions. But what procedures are in place to, as I always tell first graders, self-check your work, find the mistake before the teacher finds it? What procedures do you have in place within your accounting department to cross-check or self-check to catch some of these things before they're audited?
Uh, President Carver, uh, Dr. Pack, uh, the, the number one way uh, for us to validate or verify the information is through the reconciliation process. And we did have a breakdown of those systems during that encumbrance period um, and which resulted in uh, uh, the, the changes. Uh, I will say, uh, we did have some noted uh, areas within the reconciliation during the school year as well. Um, so I think we not, we don't need to focus uh, solely on the encumbrance period. I think we have some areas that we need to uh, review our procedures uh, in reconciliation in general and make sure that we can find those things prior to, um, you know, sooner than we did in this particular year.
Thank you. Give me some post notes, I'll look at it.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Miglerino, do we keep all of our cash accounts at the county? We don't have a bank account?
Uh, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, we do have a couple of bank accounts here, clearing accounts, more than anything, but most of it is, uh, you know, the majority of our money is um, i- is kept at the county.
No, I'm speaking just about the cash accounts because it looks like that's all got, was the issue, was the cash account?
Uh, no, it, it, it was uh, how we posted uh, uh, property revenue and um, other revenues during the encumbrance period was the majority of the, uh, of the issue.
Okay, so it wasn't just cash, it was the revenues that were more the issue?
Correct.
Cause I'm just wondering, I, I, I know that we kept a cash, we kept cash accounts, we reconciled monthly, wouldn't that have caught the concern? But if it's posting of revenue, that's different. Um, because you're just, it's just, it's really not money, it's, it is, but it's visions versus the county. It's not, cash was never moved anywhere inappropriate, it's just the reconciliation of the two systems, correct?
President Carver, Ms. Fisher, you, you are correct.
Okay, I'm just wondering, cause it, it sounded like a cash account issue and I was just
Yeah.
That, that would be a finding also, but it would just be a finding of a bank account, which is min- is, is explainable and not, would not have to be corrected.
You're correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further comment? Uh, Mr. Miglerino, I don't know if this, this might be off to- topic, but I saw something today where um, campuses are not a- able to take Google, Google Pay and Apple Pay. Will that change or alter any of the cash discrepancies that we're having? Dr. Finch has something?
Yeah, this is, um, you saw that on Instagram, good, good catch. Um, that um, is actually related to the student stores, so um, they have their own world that they live in. And so this is um, the bigger picture, but, um, yeah, we, we just added that feature at some of the uh, student stores at the high schools.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Just one more question.
Mrs. Fisher?
Just to follow up on that, is there a reason InTouch can't take Google Pay or the others, or is it because of the fees that would be associated?
Uh, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, I, I'm, I'm, I know that we're using InTouch uh, for the collection or for our point of sale uh, at all of our schools. And I believe we just are in the process of uh, putting in um, readers that will actually accept uh, you know, tap-to-pay uh, procedures, but I don't know the answer of why that we wouldn't, um.
Well, and I, I know, and InTouch does take the credit cards and it does do the online as well. The problem being is that you have the, you have to have your servicer on the backend. Um, if you recall, I in, I installed InTouch at the same time that you guys were so, Heather and I kind of worked together on some of it. I was just wondering if it's possible, cause it, it may be something that the community should know. If it is, that the fees that are attached with multiple servers, multiple services versus the one service and the fact that there's regulations on what fees can be paid for and from where, it may be the reason why, but it would be good for us to know. Um, because that's the kind of question that the community does bring to us. Um, and it would be good to have a, a, a meaningful explanation, so if you could put that in some kind of Friday update or something.
Yeah, uh, President Carver, Ms. Fisher, um, I don't believe it's related to fees that I know of. I think uh, we implemented it early on and did not buy chip reading devices, uh, so the tap-to-pay feature wasn't available. Um, but we have since, are in the, or we are currently in the process of converting the d- the devices to be able to, um, be able to uh, um, collect the credit card transactions with the chip, which gives you the tap feature to be able to use uh, Apple Pay and Google Pay. Um, but I'll have to get more information to speak more intelligently about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miglerino. Tonight we have no public comments, so we'll go into board reports, Mrs. Fisher.
Um, my board report is going to be, I'm not, I'm gonna trim it, simply because it's gonna be ignored anyways. Um, I will send again to the board and the board president and the board secretary um, my same report that I do, my same requests. Um, they are the same requests that I have made every board meeting for the last several. Um, and other board members have also made the same requests for a study session, for a discussion regarding um, some of the concerns that have come to us. Um, the full list I will post as well. They have the dates listed on them, I'll post it online, I'll again, email it to everyone. Um, I'm sure they'll be ignored again. Um, but that leads to my next um, topic. Well, let's do the happy stuff first. I just want to congratulate our national board certified teachers that um, were able, you know, that, that completed their process or renewed their process. We had a really lovely evening, um, Mr. Botfield and um, Ms., uh, Dr. Pack and myself. Um, and a lot of our staff were there. And it was, um, it's always a fun event, it's always neat. There's always one or two teachers that really go all out and wears lots of sparkle. Um, and they really have a lot of fun with it. Um, so I just want to congratulate them, it was a very um, nice evening. We enjoyed it, um, even driving that far out, which is ironic, cause I drive that every day twice, um, there and back. Um, so that's the positive, the uh, experience that I had in Deer Valley this week. Um, I am a little concerned, a little bit more concerned now, because we, we, with the policies that we passed, we're concerned about having our board V P into the agenda review. But I now have been informed that the superintendent is having one-on-one-on-one um, business meetings to decide the budget without having it here, which is concerning to me. Um, I believe it should be concerning to the community. Um, I knew they were occurring last year, um, because three members would come into the board meetings um, with no discussion, no nothing, and would just vote and it would be done. Um, and so I kind of knew there was meetings happening, but um, now that it was publicly stated that we're doing one-on-one-on-one meetings, um, I kind of think that's a concern. Um, the other thing that I want to comment about is I, I really want to comment to our community. Because I think I have in, in the number of forty emails, maybe more to answer. Various community concerns, um, whether it be about their student or about programs or about issues that they're having or about problems. Um, I think the community needs to know that this board, though we could address your issues, we could follow the process that we have in place. We could uh, follow our policies, uh, same thing for our teachers, some of them are teachers, I don't want to leave them out. Um, while we could by statute and by policy follow the procedures and address your concerns in the appropriate way, um, for whatever reason, this board has chose not to address anything, um, and to just kind of go with the flow. All I can do is apologize, I will send an email to each of you eventually. Um, but I, I don't, I can't say that that there's any hope in any of it. Um, your kids, your staff, your pay is at the mercy of one person. And uh, with zero oversight and zero um, transparency. Um, so I will answer your emails, sorry I haven't already. I kind of thought, taking the spring break week, um, as I told Ms. Taylor when she sent me a text message to ask me about a response to something. I kind of thought since y'all were on spring break, I would have a spring break, so I wouldn't have to check my emails. And I discovered that's not accurate. Um, so there's a lot to respond to, I will respond to you, um, unfortunately not with much hope, so, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Mr. Botfield?
Well, I agree with Ms. Fisher on the teaching. And Saturday night was really terrific. And let me mention the five teachers that were honored from the Deer Valley School System, Heather Walsh, Justin Price, Deborah Cadney, Deborah Johnson and Lisa Hancock. This was superb. And teachers deserve the recognition that they don't get. Jim, nice job, tough job and not appreciated enough for what you do. And on that note, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Botfield. Dr. Pack?
So I've spent several evenings at the district office reading through vouchers. And for the public, it's not, not ESA vouchers, it's, it's receipts, paper trail for what the district buys and spends. And as VP, I sign that. And something people will learn about me, I don't sign anything unless I read it. So I, I, I do like to ask questions because that's how I learn. So again, thank you for all of you on the cabinet answering my questions. And yes, Mr. McGarino, thank you for all your work. So I have been looking through all that and, and, and reading and learning. So that, that takes a lot of time. I have met the night crew, so there's an advantage to that. I did finish reading the How Not to Be a Terrible Board Member by Mayor, Richard Mayor. And I will save some things I learned. It's lessons for school administrators and board members. I will lay, I save some of those questions and comments for the next meeting. But it did peak some questions in my mind about our district and how to make it better. It was great to attend the National Board Certified Teachers Event. It, it was lovely. The food was tasty and it was so exciting to clap for teachers. Besides the five, thank you, Mr. Botfield for listening. Those, I think Ms. Fisher and I both put them on our social media pages to do a shout out for them. Also teachers in the valley that I recognize not in Deer Valley. So it's, was really wonderful that we got to attend that event and recognize them for their extra above and beyond efforts. Teachers work so hard and then to get that extra feather in their cap. It's exciting as a board member to stand up and clap for them. Also, I just have a couple of questions. Maybe I missed it in the fire hose information, but did we ever get the bus stop situation resolved? And then, so that's one question. I know it's a board report. I need a, I'd like an answer on the, on the bus stop. And then also, again, I'd like to officially request a budget study session. Thank you, Mr. McGarino, for that timeline. I'm thinking May twenty-seventh would be in between those dates of you submitting information to us and the time that we have to have it do by. So I'll second your request. And also I now learned something new in efficiency study. So however I get more information on that, if that costs money or how that's asked for or because we can always all be more efficient if we all take a step back and take a look at things. We, growth mindset is what we teach our students. And if we just take a step back, is there anything that we missed that maybe another set of eyes could, could look at and, and see some suggestions or ideas or, or pointers for, for slimming and trimming and, and making more efficient? That's all.
Dr. Pack, Dr. Finch, you wanted to answer her question?
I believe the answer was in the Friday update, but we can, we can cut and paste do it again on the bus stop.
Thank you, sir.
So I was able to be a witness to the Youth Arts Month celebration down at the state Capitol earlier this month. All five of our high schools supplied our dance troupe to be on display down there. And each one of them gave a different type of dance. I wouldn't even begin to try to embarrass myself and say what the different types were. But they did an amazing job. It was the first time that the state Capitol had put this type of a celebration on. And the kids did an amazing job. So take an opportunity and look at some of the different social media posts about that. And I, I, I just want to reiterate that as, as board members, we don't write law. And if we're passing policies that don't sit well with a majority of folks in the community, I will give you the same advice I gave that organization I spoke to last week. We need to talk to our legislators. They're the ones that craft the laws. We need to write policies that operate within those laws. Go off the reservation, so to speak, only sets the district up for potential legal action. And if we go too far off the reservation, board members lose their protection, if you will, as board members when it comes to legal challenges. So we, we, we need to be careful. I mean, we all agree that there is right and sometimes there is right and there's, and sometimes they don't coincide. I personally have had issues with open meeting law regulations and how stringent they are. But this particular law is writ for, written for worst possible case abuses. I mean, if you had a group of people in an elected body like this that were getting together behind closed doors and coming up with their votes before the meeting, then, then that's, that's why the law is there. So the people aren't encouraged to do that. But I, regardless of how I voted today, I think it would be a great idea for more people to be in the room to have a say when it comes to putting the agenda together. The fact of the matter is, the administration did what they were asked to. They got multiple legal opinions and we have three folks that say probably not a good idea to keep going the way that you're going. And if the community hasn't figured out by now, since the first day I was on this dais, I'm kind of about figuring out what the rules and regulations are and making sure that we're following them. So if I make a mistake, I'm happy to admit it and I'm happy to backtrack whenever necessary. But in this particular case, we've got several different legal opinions from different backgrounds that kind of point us in that direction. So again, we don't write, we don't write the laws. We write policies to try to help manage the business of the district. And I think there was something else pretty important, but it must not been because I can't remember. Dr. Finch, go ahead.
Just wanted to give a shout out to Marie. She's in here hiding in the back. The Deer Valley Education Foundation, we put on the Battle of the Books today. About ninety students from thirty schools. I used to coach Battle of the Books back in the days. It's a great opportunity for students to stretch their memories as teams regarding specific books. A great competition we have here and the education foundation helps us put that on. I did hit my five-hundredth classroom visit last, about right before break. I tried to get to five hundred classrooms every year, been hitting close to six hundred pretty much. And the idea is to see teaching and learning in real time and make connections with staff in real time. And that's been always fun to showcase students and staff on social media. So feel free to follow me if you want to see some of those. If you didn't get a chance to see our award ceremony tonight, we may be marching well onto our seventy state titles again. We, last year we had seventy state, individual state and team titles, team and individual titles last year, which I thought we'd never break. But we might be on the path again. Our DECA students have been doing really well. Our fine arts did really well again this year and our teams are already doing well too. So I've said three years, years in a row, we would not, three years in a row, we weren't going to break that last year. And who knows, looks like we might be on the same path. So congratulations to the students and the coaches that put in the time in their fine arts, their academics and their team awards. Testing just started, I think. That's a go. So again, we had the most A's in our district history and our district was rated A. Again, I put some salt in that. I don't put a ton in it. But it is just a reflection, another point in time, one testing day to show that demonstrate our students' capabilities. Annie's Closet's rolling for prom appointments. If there are students out there that are interested, it's on the district website or on the website. Opportunity for you to sign up for a prom outfit. We served about half a dozen kids last year. This year we've already doubled that and we're probably a month away still from hitting proms. So if you're interested and you need a dress or shoes or suit, we've, we've now, we only served Goldwater kids last year. This year Deer Valley kids have jumped in on it, O'Connor kids and Goldwater kids have jumped in on it. So the process seems to be working and the word of mouth is spreading. And so pretty exciting. We serve about a thousand kids a month through the Annie's Closet for food, clothes and shoes. So thanks to our community who put their, their items in the three bins. We have one at the district office, one at Notara Canyon and one at Union Park. So if you want to put, put a hoodie in there, that's where you put it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finch. Future meetings are on the district website and I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at nine oh five.